Very good, welcome everybody. Good morning. Let's call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Go call Jake.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve this morning's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Communications. Jake, anything received by your office?
Not to me, no.
Supervisors.
Regarding, we received a letter regarding the Country Club Knowles Condo Association and regarding the address concerning 613 Attica Road, south of Knoxville.
Very good, thank you Keisha. Anything else Steve?
No, I too received that communication also.
Yeah, yeah, we all did, so, very good. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda, the public can speak on items not listed on today's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Carla?
I just wanted to make the public aware that we did complete the Marion County Housing Assessment and that that information is on MarionCountyIowa.com. We have the whole report as well as several executive summaries, so just making people aware that that information is out there now.
Very good, Carla, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Carla.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Can everybody hear okay? That's what I was guessing. We might have to shut off the air conditioner. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Except last week, I was back here and it was blasting, now this week I'm here, alright. Any other public comments? Renee? Alright, we'll move on. Is there a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Alright, on to business, first item is a Pleasant Grove Township Trustee question. We've had a few discussions on this in past meetings. Who's gonna lead off with this? Jared, is this, would this be for you? I won't put you on the spot on a Tuesday morning, but...
Sure. As we've discussed in the past, there is a vacancy on the Pleasant Grove Township Trustee Board and I think we've all decided that it's a good idea that, so we get somebody in there. I think we've had four applications come in on this and I think the board is free to go ahead and select someone by whatever procedure you choose to see fit, whether that be just selecting a name randomly or, I think that's been done in the past, but, but yeah, that's, that's what needs to happen.
Okay. Well, before we do that, Jake, we've done this in the past where we've done a drawing out of a hat.
Yep.
What...
We've done it a couple of different ways in the past for different townships. Indiana Township, you had a similar situation and I think you only had, I don't think, applications were received and you only had a couple of people that were interested and so they were the ones that were appointed. They actually were previous trustees. Recently Knoxville Township had a similar situation, applications received and I believe you guys, because there were multiple applications and, you know, just to weigh out one or the other, you drew a name out of a hat. So you've done it a couple of different ways. This position that's available on the, for the Township Trustees is also just for FYI, gonna be a regular position that will be, also need to be on the ballot this fall. So, any appointment made now, the position will be available. Township paperwork is due in August for all townships to put a name on the ballot this fall. So, this position does, the term ends on December 31 of '24 for whoever is appointed at this point.
Okay, very good, thank you Jake. Do we have the individuals here today who are listed? Are they all here? It looks like we have one, alright. Very good, thank you. Board? How would you like to proceed? We've done, as Jake said, a couple of different ways.
I guess I would be curious on if there was a preference from the existing board members, but I don't know if that would be appropriate or not.
Who's on the board currently that is here? Yes sir? Any preference for you? Any? I can't, I can't see you sir. Okay. Okay, so you have a preference for Ms. Richard? Alright, very good. Anybody else? And Jake, you said we had four?
Yes sir. There were four applications turned in.
Well, I think in the interest of just being fair, we should probably stay with some type of blind drawing. Do you have names and a hat? I don't have a hat today.
Yes we do, Steve has a hat. We did put some names on if you want.
Let's do that.
So, I believe we have, correct me if I'm wrong, the applications turned in were Aaron DeMoss, Jocelyn Richards, Mark Clifton, and Kai Sage.
Okay.
You received all those applications, I believe they were turned in through the website application.
Correct, correct.
So...
Just to make it perfectly clear, this would be the temporary appointment until the election, so any, any, any one of these other individuals could, could run during that election.
This is an appointment to the Township Trustee position that is expiring on December 31 of this year, so this term would only be through that and anyone can put their name on the ballot for any of the positions for this fall. So that's correct and, actually this fall regarding Pleasant Grove Township Trustees, we have this position and another position that are ending in '24, so both of those will be on the ballot, so it'll be vote for two. And then there's been another appointment to the position that's ending in '26. So there will also be a to fill vacancy position this fall for the term ending in '26. So there's actually three opportunities to put your name on the ballot for Pleasant Grove Township Trustee this fall.
Okay.
That paperwork does need to be turned into the auditor's office in August.
Very good, thank you Jake. Well, let's go ahead and do that. I think that's the... Do you have the names and the...
This is the chief of...
Okay.
That's how you did it before?
That's how I did it before? Alright. Try to fold them the same.
They were cut the same size.
The only, and the reason I mentioned that and wanted to bring out that was addressing that gentleman's preference.
Got a hole in the hat here Steve.
I do. Probably got shot at.
Keisha?
Jocelyn Richards.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Normal procedure now, normal procedure now would be, we'll email or we'll send the appointee oath of office and, or we'll send it, or to the clerk, but the township should administer the oath of office at a meeting to this new appointee and we'll send the Iowa State Extension Council handbook to this individual. We have the addresses from the applications, so...
Okay.
You guys will, if, if the motion is approved to appoint the person that was picked, that's what would be the next...
Which we need next, we need a motion now to, we need a motion now to appoint Jocelyn Richards to the Pleasant Grove Board of Trustees.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and support, Jake?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good.
Congratulations Jocelyn.
Yes, yes. Yeah. All of us?
Yeah.
And Jocelyn, at this time, I would like to further expand on a little bit. There is a Township Trustee and Clerk training that would be helpful, I think, and it's through the ISU Extension. It's, it's just an hour-long training. You have several days, I mean, I think it's 60 days, 90 days to do it, so it's not terribly long. The cost of the workshop is $35, but you do get a certificate of completion of Township Trustee and Clerk training. So, I would like to highly recommend this considering the circumstances and what's going, so I'll leave you this up here, so...
Alright, very good, thank you. Anything else on this topic? Alright, entertain a motion to close discussion.
We had the...
Oh, we had the vote, we don't have to?
I think, I think...
Jared's standing up there, I don't want him to say, "No, you gotta do that Mark." Alright.
Yep.
Alright, congratulations.
Thanks Jocelyn.
Alright. Very good, Jared, thank you for shepherding that. Alright, we'll move on. Next item is an engagement agreement for the EMS as essential service. Jared, is that you?
It is.
Alright.
Thanks to the board for considering this item, I did put this request in. This request originated out of kind of a conversation between Jake and I. You know, we've obviously been spending a lot of time looking at the procedures of 422D and the EMS issue and it is a relatively new law and it's not something that comes up all the time. And so, just in order to make sure that Jake and I are seeing everything properly, I thought it'd be best to kind of take the belt-suspenders approach and have somebody else make sure that we're seeing the same things with the code as far as timelines and procedures. You know, it's not often that I have to draft ballot language, so I wanna make sure that, you know, if we get to that point in this procedure that everything is done correctly and to make sure that there are no setbacks. So, we'll try to use the assistance sparingly, but I do think it is a benefit for us to have people who have gone through this with other counties assistance, just to make sure that everything's being done properly. That's really all that it is. I can't imagine that it's going to be a considerable amount of work, but, you know, with drafting language and things like that and timelines, we just wanna make sure we're doing it right.
Very good. Jared, this is separate and distinct, we have a relationship with Allers for HR, but this, so this will be separate and distinct from that relationship.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then what about hourly rate?
It's on the agreement, I mean, it's a considerable sum.
$225 an hour?
Yeah. There's two different rates, there's Christine's rate and then the other rate.
Okay.
I've worked with Christine in the past, she works with cities a lot, I've dealt with her on election things and different things. So she's, her area of expertise is with municipalities and governments.
Right, okay.
They've helped a couple of other counties draft the necessary documents for the board to consider as, if you can, if you and as you continue this process.
Right, okay, very good. Board questions for Jared on that, on this item?
Well, yeah, you, you and Jake are comfortable doing it this, more comfortable doing it this way by having this outside source do that, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, like I said, it's sort of just a belt-suspenders approach, just to make sure that we're seeing the code the way that it should be read. You know, some of these things, there's not a lot of, you know, case law and stuff out there, because it hasn't been litigated and all those things. We don't wanna be making that case law, so we just wanna make sure that we're understanding it properly and we're putting the right stuff on the ballots and things like that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm supportive of what you guys are comfortable with.
Thank you Steve.
I have no questions about it.
Okay, very good. Well, Jared, I appreciate it very much, but you know I'm not gonna support, because I don't, I don't support the concept. Because I don't think it's time to raise taxes, so I can't support this. I do agree that you do need to have, should it go through, proper legal counsel.
Understood.
Okay, just so you understand that.
Absolutely.
We got this R-word being thrown around right now called recession. Don't raise taxes in a recession. So if there's no more discussion? Jake?
Wait a minute.
Is there a motion?
Well, I understand your concern with the taxes Mark, but I believe that our role, my role as supervisor in this is to move the process forward. I'm not here to support it or reject it. I think we just need to get the process moved forward. And once that's done, when this advisory council, if we agree to declare it an essential service, they're going to have to sell it to the public. And I believe that's what those meetings, the, whatever form or fashion that the EMS services decide to present that to the public, they need to sell that. I understand the concerns with, I've heard the term double taxation. They need, they need the public, it behooves the public to come to these meetings that are going to be set up in the future and address those questions to their taxing entities, whether it be the city of Powell, the city of Knoxville. I, that's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, and Steve, and Steve, you know, just so everybody understands, you can have a disagreement and be respectful of the other person's opinion and I totally respect the opinion. My view is different. My view is that the board is supposed to see the lay of the land, understand what's going on in the current economic environment and not propose things that we know the only goal is to raise taxes. We're supposed to at least be a stop to those types of issues. So that's just gonna be a difference of approach and a difference of, of opinion on that Steve. But I, but I do respect your position.
The public's gonna have to educate themselves extremely well on this item.
Okay, very good. So is there a motion to support this agreement?
I'll make the motion to the Allers and Cooney Engagement Agreement for the EMS Essential Service.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
No.
Johnner?
Aye.
Alright, Jared, thank you. Alright, next is Resolution 2024-63 and this is to start that EMS as essential service process. So it's authorizing notice setting a date when the board will consider a resolution, so this is the first step in that process.
Yep.
Jake, is that you?
Uh, it doesn't matter Jared or myself, so this is, after all the discussions, this resolution was drafted by Allers and Cooney in preparation of any consideration. The timeline, you can, I, I'm sorry, I can't see on here, but it's, there's the 60-day, so you guys take this action and then there's the 60-day notice before you can start doing the considerations. So I believe that the way it's laid out here, if this is approved, we will get this to the next edition of the official newspaper to start that 60-day process. And again, this is just process of the Board of Supervisors to, if it can, if it keeps continuing to undeclare the EMS as an essential service. So, the way the timeline works with the notices and getting it to the paper, the first consideration reading, and there's multiple, would be August 13 at your regular board meeting. That's what this starts.
Correct.
And that starts that whole timeline that's been discussed over the last year.
Correct, yeah, we have to, Jared, anything you wanna add to that?
No, no.
This is why we, this, so, this...
Yeah.
This is the starting resolution.
Yeah, we've talked about this ad nauseam, so, any, any comments board? I think everybody knows, everybody stands on it, so... Is there a motion on Resolution 2024-63?
I make motion to approve Resolution 2024-63.
Second.
Ramey?
No.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next is RagBri event, Marion County Courthouse. Coming from the back corner. Are you... Anita's leaving, alright. I thought she was...
This...
Is there anybody here for RagBri?
This is, this is...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Well, board, what do we have? What do we need?
I think this is more internal on how we want to approach RagBri. I believe in 2013, when RagBri came through, we looked at how the day was treated and whether we were looking at employees, whether they received the day off or we closed the courthouse, I should say.
Any thoughts though, on, do we wanna do what we did before? We've got some highlighted language in here for how we did this in the last time RagBri came through. Wanna do something similar, different? What, what do you wanna do?
Did we, and we closed, okay. Closed the courthouse, alright, so it's just the courthouse, all other employees were working?
Yes, I believe that's the way, I know, I was.
That's what we did, that's what we did.
I know I was.
That was my recommendation. I just wanted to add, just from the courthouse function, the, that's our, generally our juvenile court day and we have not been scheduling anything on that day for Judge Gaiter's courtroom. I think there is a civil trial right now scheduled for that week, just in talking with our clerk that they, but it may get moved. But, as far as our operations go, you know, we, like I said, we haven't been scheduling anything.
From our, I mean, from the auditor's office, that day, we can make things work, if, if a special election pops up, if we get in a special election, there may be instance that we will have to have the office open. We can do that ourselves, I don't know yet, but that would be the reason, the only reason at this point that we would have to have that, have to have the doors open that day. Otherwise, we don't have appointments or things like that.
Just from a safety standpoint and just people getting downtown, it just probably makes sense to go ahead and close the courthouse.
It appeared we've already set precedent, so I think we all just follow like we did before.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, so... What about other staff? Non-courthouse staff, any thoughts on that? Oh, Jason?
Obviously, they come in the one day and they leave the next day, so traffic-wise, I mean, it's gonna be the afternoon, the one, the morning of the next, but are you doing it for both days on it? I mean, I guess, just a question.
That's a fair question, I mean, we, I mean, you hate to close at noon on the one day, because then you're really closed almost a full day and a half, right?
Yeah, just, I mean, just so we kinda know also.
I think that, trying to remember back, back then, but sitting there, did they leave town? So, people coming uptown, and I think there's a big concert that, uptown that night and be a lot of setup and things. So logistically, if streets are closed, if Knoxville's closing streets and things like that, logistically, it would be more difficult to have the courtes open the day they come in. When they left, I feel like they left early and did they come by on the south side? The streets were all open to normal traffic, right? A lot of them are gone by the time, by morning, is that right?
My recommendation would you be, you closed at noon, I mean, because most of the bikes aren't gonna be here until, and then don't open until the noon the next day. That way you have two days of business that somebody still needed if they needed the day off to do it, but yet our employees would be, wouldn't be up there during the busy times.
Yeah, you're gonna miss the intense times, I think that's a great idea.
If you closed at noon on the one day, that gives the people a chance to work the booths or different things, county employees, and then the next day, they're not trying to get to work when all the bikes are trying to...
It's a great idea.
...whatever.
Yeah, any thoughts on that, folks? I think that's a great suggestion.
Oh, it makes, it makes perfect sense.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. So as far as the courthouse goes, is there a motion then to close the courthouse at noon on?
Yeah, what is, what date that is?
We have a calendar, I don't have a date on here. Jason, do you remember the dates? Do you remember the dates?
Twenty, 24th and 5th.
It's the 24th.
So noon on the 24th and reopen at noon on the 25th, correct? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Alright, any other items you wanna discuss about RagBri? Just courthouse, yes, correct.
Yes.
Anything else? Alright. Next, Resolution 2024-53. This is to approve dispersment of funds, ARPA funds. We had a discussion in the last meeting about taking care of some cleanup items at the VA and we talked about the laundry building, the water tower, some repairs to the laundry building to hopefully maybe prepare it better to be presented for sale. We have some dollars left for ARPA funds and Jake has here in the resolution the breakout of what we discussed in the last meeting. So board, are there any additional discussion items you would like to have on this topic?
I don't.
No, I think we, we hashed her out last time.
If there is none, oh...
Just a quick question, I'm not sure how much is left or if Troy or Chris have talked to you guys in regards to, on the ARPA funding side of it, but just something to consider down the road. The, there's a backup system at the jail that has been in place since the building was built. It's for the computer backup side, with everything with IT going on right now, the assessments, looking at it again, it's probably going to have to be replaced sometime down the road here, so not today or whatever, but just, so it's on your guys' radar that it's an item.
Okay.
They're talking about it's like a $70,000 item, but when we've been working with the Gridders Electric, they're wondering, I mean, why we would have to replace that and just not do like another backup generator side of it. But I just didn't know if Chris or Troy had mentioned anything, but with that ARPA funding, you might just, you might have a request down the road.
So...
I don't know how much is left.
Yeah, Jake, we had, we had less than $200,000 that was uncommitted, is that correct?
Uh, yes, from a obligation standpoint...
So not spent yet Jason, but just uncommitted to projects we had...
I think the unobligated portion, again, this is just from the amount that the county received to the obligated amount, this doesn't take into account if there was overrun or underrun on a certain project, but there's about $75,000 unobligated at this point.
After this?
After the, if...
If this passes?
Resolution 2024-53.
Alright, so...
That may just be, yep.
Alright.
Just a discussion item down the road for us.
Okay, very good, thank you Jason, thank you. So we'll kinda keep that number in our minds if that comes up, but if there's nothing further on this, we talked about this would be a good use of those funds, doesn't impact, at least at the county level, county taxpayer dollars. It's federal taxpayer dollars, so it does impact us all, but good use of those dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2024-53.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye. I'd also like to further add, you know, when speaking with Kaufman Recycling, they spoke about coming in on Friday with equipment. So, just in case media or, or city of Knoxville sees them, that's what they're doing, they're coming in with equipment.
Alright, very good. Next, Resolution 2024-60, this is transfer lost funds, local option sales tax to principal and interest for the law enforcement center. Jake, is this the last one?
Last one.
Yep.
This is the last, drum roll Jason.
That's right, last one.
Alright, any, any discussion?
You guys have done this, the board has done this for 15 years. Essentially, it's moving $300,000 from the local option sales tax fund to the debt service fund to reduce the tax, the levy, debt service levy or tax burden on the, on the property taxpayers.
Yep, very good. Excellent, nice to get that one off the books. Very good, alright, any, any thoughts, any discussion? If there is none, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve Resolution 2024-60.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Good. It's free and clear now Jason.
Okay, let's gotta make that last payment.
We still gotta do that. Alright, Resolution 2024-61, and this is to authorize general fund money to move to the capital improvement fund, this is transfer.
Yeah, so this is again, um, yep, sorry, this is again, something that you have done for the last couple of years of varying amounts. In the current 23-24 budget, you had proposed to move $50,000 to set aside for a capital project. Just kind of a building of, of that type of, of a, of a project for some sort of a construction or, or capital project use. We are working on resolu, we are working on transfers of the other. Fiscal year is rapidly nearing, so that's why this is in front of you, if you wanted to do it again this year or not.
So Jake, the current amount in the capital improvement fund is? I wanna say it's, did we say 600?
Yeah.
Is that about right?
Yeah, it's a little over six, yeah, it's a little over six hundred thousand. Yeah, I don't recall exactly.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're all, we all kinda looked at it, so I think we're saying about six hundred thousand, so is there a desire to continue to transfer dollars? Uh, fifty thousand dollars to that fund?
Yes, I, I, I desire to do that.
Steve?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good. Annual review time. Tyler?
Yeah, per my employee agreement, as the county's standalone contract employee, I uh, put this on the agenda as part of my annual review and salary negotiation, per the effective agreement that was approved last year and is valid for remaining two years, so through June thirty of twenty twenty-six. So I provided you a memo, a summary for salary, not sure what your process is this year for employee reviews, but I guess, um, any questions regarding the memo? Or the recommendation I made at the bottom, bolded at the bottom of that memo?
Right. First of all, just from a review standpoint, any comments from the board on job performance?
Yes.
Suspense is killing me, Steve.
I think you've done a great job, buddy. I think Marion County is lucky to have you. Uh, and I, I see you're, you're in line with, with the other recommendations we've made this year on salary increases, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I wouldn't have made the recommendation if I wasn't comfortable with it.
Okay.
Um, as you're aware, our budgeted line item was six percent in total for our department. You know, the baseline is five, however, there were some, uh, wage equalizations within our department. So some positions will receive more than five, and then what I'm recommending is four for myself.
Correct. You sure?
Tyler, I will echo what Steve said, but on top of that, I will also say you're always being creative. Thank you for, you know, looking past and looking at grants and different opportunities and and even sometimes when you have to bring before us the hard subjects, you do, and you tell us, you know, this is what I'm looking at. Um, and I appreciate that, I appreciate your just willingness to, to present all, and, um, thank you for your due diligence, I mean, it is, yeah, with, you know, dealing with sinkholes to roads that, uh, are problematic to, you know, even the amount of calls that you guys yield that don't ever make it to us, you know, we appreciate that, I appreciate everything you do.
I'd also like to thank you, there's something that's near and dear to my heart, both of our hearts, I believe, the Junction Ninety-two shop. I, on behalf of the citizens of Marion County, thank you very much for getting this process down the road without asking for additional tax money.
Yeah, thank you, it's been a big project. Sir, it will serve the citizens for decades.
Well, I feel like I should be hard on you since they're, with these glowing reports, but I think what's, um, again, we've talked about this in other reviews, Tyler, I think from a, uh, financial management standpoint, I'm always very impressed by your diligence, um, the information that you present to the board. Uh, you've got the largest county budget, larger, the largest allocation, you probably have one of the departments that has the most diverse funding streams that come to it from all the different sources that you have to deal with, and then the changes on a year-over-year basis. I really admire the way you've addressed those challenges, uh, in managing all of that, uh, keeping our roads where they need to be, understanding the funding limitations that we have, uh, for that. I think the challenge, I think, how many years have you been doing this now?
Uh, ten and a half.
Ten and a half? What happened, Jake?
No, he was just sitting in the hallway waiting on his interview yesterday.
I, I think the real, if, uh, this is where I'm gonna be a little blunt, Tyler, I think the real challenge is coming.
Yeah, I agree.
I think as you brought up in the last budget presentation, and you've said this, uh, kinda preparing the, the board, it's with continued changes in federal and state funding, the burden shifts. And how will we as a county address that shifting of that financial burden? Um, to deal with how we're going to maintain our roads. Uh, probably our most essential service is roads, so, um, I, I look forward to seeing your creativity uh, coming up in the, in subsequent years and budgets, and how that will be dealt with, your staff management, I think, has been incredible. Uh, you, you do a lot with, with little, and your folks do an incredible job. Uh, so, so that's a leadership, uh, issue for me, and I think you, you lead extremely well. Uh, your safety numbers continue, I, one of the reasons we've been able to reduce our work comp uh, insurance rates and the amount of allocation of work comp is because of the safety uh, concerns of your department and of course of Jason's group. You're our two largest departments for that, so you guys do a wonderful job paying attention to those things, so. I don't have anything super negative, I just, the challenge is coming.
Yeah, you're right.
That's, I, I think that's what's gonna be interesting, and I look forward to seeing what kind of creative solutions you will have for the board to consider. So, I don't have a problem with four percent, I don't know if you two have a question on that? We don't seem like we have a lot of negative comments, I've, I don't hear from the public anything negative. Tyler? I mean, if I had somebody from the public saying, hey, really, this guy is an obnoxious jerk and doesn't deal with my issues or anything like that, but we have zero comments, uh, from my perspective on that, so. Um, I think that also speaks well to how you handle even tough issues. Not everybody's going to come up and smile at you and say thank you, um, so. Is that right, Steve?
That's exactly right, we know that, don't we, Tyler?
Any, any comments, additional comments, questions, concerns?
No, thank you very much, Tyler, and, and your crew.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, if there is none, I would, uh, entertain a motion to receive the annual review, and Tyler's recommended four percent increase.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Tyler, thank you. Alright, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two, uh, additional expense appropriation. So Jake, just to set the table, we've got a few of these coming up, I think this is the remainder of the agenda other than updates. We set a cap on appropriations, yeah, in the last budget, what'd we do, Jake, ninety percent?
So it was.
Or eighty-five?
Budget was approved and then, um, appropriations, um, were appropriated a hundred percent for all salary wages and benefits. Um, at, at one hundred percent, and then any non, um, employee-related, uh, expense line items were, um, appropriated at ninety percent.
So a chance for the board to get some additional visibility on expenses, uh, and a mechanism for some additional expense control for the board, uh, as we, as we look at, how do we, how do we maintain, um, expense control? Uh, throughout the budgeting process for the entire year, so. First one up is medical examiner, I don't know who's got that one. Kim? Very good, thank you.
Sit on. Okay, alrighty, um, last calendar year, the medical examiner team had sixty-three cases, um, and so far this calendar year, they've had thirty-six, so that's quite a significant increase. Uh, not a great trajectory. And as far as the, um, the allocation, the medical examiner team and the investigators specifically are paid per event, so they're not part of the salaried piece, so we're just asking for, uh, you to release that last ten percent, um, for this fiscal year, and, um, and so that, because it's, it's, we're gonna need it.
I mean, our case count is up, I mean, that's sad to say, right?
Case count is up significantly, actually.
And, and we pay people by the event, as you said, so.
Correct.
Board, any questions for Kim on this?
No, I have none.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two.
Second. Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
And, yeah, I don't know if I pointed out earlier, I saw it, but jumping, but this is just the appropriations part, not amending, I, I had sent out a message earlier, so I apologize to the departments for being a little bit behind on getting these forward to the board, these are the only ones that were received, and then, um, I'm still working on and will be bringing for you any budget amendments, which would be a higher expense amount than what you had budgeted for.
Correct.
I didn't make that clear earlier, I apologize.
No, no, I thought you didn't, thank you, Jake, thank you. Uh, next, uh, Mr. Edwards, conservation.
I think when I sent the email to you, I gave you some of the description of what that would be for, so we're finishing, uh, the cabin renovation, which is about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation to our seven existing modern cabins. That money is basically coming out of the reserve account, which, the money that flows into the reserve account is from rentals for the cabins. So we need to finish that up, we've got some furniture, some, uh, refrigerators, some internal stuff that needs to be replaced. Uh, those are several years old, and with the amount of use those cabins get, they take kind of a beating, and so we, we try to get a rotation of that, of that material out of there, so that's normally, if we can get that done this year, that's, that would be very helpful to us, so that's what that money would be used for. Also, in our budget, not only do we have a combination of taxation and revenue, if you split that eighty-three thousand out, about thirty thousand of that is revenue that we've generated, that's in the budget, there's ten percent of that effect, so.
Right.
It's not all taxation.
Right.
Right.
No, it's very good, questions for Steve?
Thank you for your explanation, Steve, appreciate that.
Alright.
And thank you for your years to Marion County also, Steve, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye, very good. Next, Carla, development.
Yes, most of our request is around items that we had contracts with, so what was submitted in our budget was the contract amount or the membership amount, like MIPA's membership amount. Um, so we don't have a lot of flexibility with those kinds of items, and as far as things like the housing study, again, we had some outside income for the majority, well, all of the housing study was paid for by outside income, so it's allowing us to spend the money that we received in that line, I'm, from, um, outside funders. Uh, the rest of the contracts are a mixture of outside and, and internal money. We also had an additional staff, so there was a couple, uh, line items with supplies and computer that we didn't quite, um, we needed the amount we budgeted for instead of the ten percent less amount to pay for those items to have new staff and have the technology and the items that we needed to staff the new person.
Okay. Questions?
Again, thank you, Carla, for, you know, giving us the email and explanation.
Yep, there are no questions, is there a motion?
Thank you, Carla.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-five.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Carla. Twenty twenty-four dash fifty-six. This is, uh, this is GIS, uh, Jake.
Yep.
Uh, this was submitted by Andrew.
So. This was Andrew Myers's, um, request, he had, it was his first time through budgeting, um, since he was the IT director, and he was very concerned about this process, and we talked about it multiple times. And, um, in the end, I just recommended to him, Andrew, you have a lot of things going on, and just ask for the ten percent. He didn't mean he was gonna spend it, he was working on, um, equipment acquisitions and had some things going on, and, uh, it was fluid, and so.
Yeah, got it.
So we, we are bringing this forward, uh, Andrew's request.
Yeah.
For his two departments.
Yeah, got it, bud. Alright, is there a motion to approve twenty twenty-four dash fifty-six?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-six.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. Which is additional IT. Uh, we've got that, let's go ahead and, let's get a motion on this.
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight, court services.
So I guess this one comes kind of from me, um, this is the department, uh, expenses that, um, there isn't a direct department head overseeing, uh, as I was reviewing, um, my own in Department Ninety-nine, I saw this one, so I guess, in essence, um, I'm bringing forward this to you for this additional ten percent, these are all basically expenses that we're ordered to pay through, um, paper services or attorney fees, or anything related to court services, so, um, I'm at, I guess, I, the board, my recommendation would be that the board approve the additional ten percent of the approved budget, and as we mentioned earlier, um, there's probably, if I remember right, um, I didn't look at it, but like, since last week, but, uh, I think there's one particular area, uh, juvenile detention services and juvenile services that is actually quite a bit behind, and you will probably see an amendment request coming forth as well. Um, due to the process of this appropriations versus amending, it's easier, we have to do this all the way down to the individual chart of account number, so I felt it was easier to get the appropriations caught up and get that on the system before then we start doing amendments if needed.
Yep.
Um, so there'll probably be an amendment coming for six, along with the amendment will come an additional appropriation, but that will then be for the amended part. So, um, that's kind of why this is before you for this eleven thousand one hundred, so kind of, um, yeah, just get that additional ten percent.
Good, I appreciate the explanation, Jake, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, non-departmental.
Sorry, Tyler.
Not yet, Tyler.
Tyler, Tyler, Tyler snuck in late.
Tyler wants that too.
Alright, so again, this is something that, um, I guess there isn't, that, this is Department Ninety-nine overseeing, um, from a board perspective. I, uh, went through and, uh, looked at the areas that, um, we, I think you can see on the individual sheets, um, what needs to be done, a lot of these were predetermined expenses, um, things that, um, are kind of, uh, budgeted for, um, again, there will probably be an amendment coming for the different projects that have happened over the year, but this is to catch up this additional ten percent, it's not everything in the non-departmental, but it is, um, individual lines that, um, to try and get the appropriation equal to the expense.
Got it.
And it doesn't mean we're, you're gonna completely fill out the amount, but we, we need to have that appropriation to be able to.
You're seeing it's going to get into that.
Yes, sir.
Into that cushion, okay, no, it's good, that's what we need to know, good. Board, questions for Jake?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine.
Second. Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Now Tyler.
Yeah, so as you know, the, the road department operates out of different funds, so Department Twenty uses multiple county funds, uh, for various parts of our operating budget. What this, uh, appropriation, uh, request is for, uh, is for our environmental fund, which comes directly from Fund Eleven. So not Fund Twenty, which is the secondary road fund, this, and, and it's a smaller budget, much smaller budget, uh, the environmental fund, uh, which funds our integrated roadside vegetation management program, and we're typically operating at a much higher utilization of that, really close to a hundred percent utilization on a typical year, um, and then, yes, year is no different, uh, we're approaching, you know, that right now, uh, with the anticipated expenditures that we have and the increasing cost of things like. Um, and then, this year is no different, uh, we're approaching, you know, that right now, uh, with the anticipated expenditures that we have, and the increasing cost of things like seed and chemicals which come out of this budget for roadside, uh, vegetation management. So, we request a, an appropriation of that ten percent for Fund eleven for Department twenty owns.
Good.
And, and high level on the Fund twenty, we're gonna be way below our typical because nothing is happening out of Junction, and we had over a million dollars planned for that, like one point four million, and very little of that's gonna be expended, so, we'll be doing a budget amendment next year because of that.
Okay, all right, very good, questions on this? If none, is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty-two-four dash sixty-two.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good. Updates, Steve?
Uh, well, I have a Marion County Comp Plan meeting tomorrow, and I heard a meeting Thursday.
Esha? Uh, mental health today, we'll see where that's at, given state action, and probably the only other thing to just, uh, make the board aware, we'll probably do a special meeting this week, uh, to go over Andrew DeHahn's o-offer letter, uh, as, uh, for consulting services and IT. Okay, so just be ready for that, Jared reviewed it and signed off, so, we need to do that. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.